America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the members.
Joe Prince?
Here.
Kathy Walts?
Here.
Tony Grass?
Here.
Jeff Ideman?
Here.
Tom Couch?
Here.
Alderman Buckjokers?
Here.
Chairman Gary Roth?
Here.
We have a call.
Approval of the agenda for February 13th, 2014. On the agenda, we have a request for special use permit to operate an auto body repair shop and conduct automotive sales at 202 North Main, to operate an auto body repair shop at 235 North Main, and maintain an automobile wrecking site at 331 North Main Street. 202 and 235 are located in the C2 Central Business District. 331 North Main Street is located in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District. And a request for a special use permit to operate a welding, fabricating, and machine shop at 353 St. Jimmy Drive, and I1 light industrial use in the C1 General Commercial District. Joe?
The only problem I got with it is there a way we can switch one and two? I'm assuming number one's probably going to take more time than number two, and rather than have...
We've went through number one pretty extensively, although your comments and Mr. Walts' comments will be important.
Point number one, there are no minutes of the previous meeting included here. But it's my understanding, even though I didn't get a notification for that meeting, that a motion that is number one on this agenda was tabled. According to Roberts' rules, a motion cannot be brought up again once it's been tabled unless a member of the group that tabled it takes it off the table, quote unquote, and then it can be heard at the next meeting. So that this would be an improper hearing tonight.
Martin, would you want to address the commission?
Well, I addressed that issue with the city attorney.
Did you discuss it with the city attorney?
And his opinion was that you could take it off the table. You don't have to. Should you do so, that proper, it has been given proper notice and could be considered tonight.
I don't want to be a pedant.
I can't, I can't.
But Roberts' rule says it can't be considered the same night it's taken off the table.
Yes, that was the issue that was raised.
So we need, a motion needs to be made to take it off the table, and then it would be addressed at the next meeting?
Yes.
I make a motion to...
Well, that's what she's saying, and the attorney's saying we could do it tonight. But I guess it would be...
What type of motion do we need to do it tonight?
What was your motion in time?
What, do we need a motion to take it off the table?
Take it off the table.
And address it this evening?
That's what the attorney's saying.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to take it off the table and address it this meeting.
All in favor?
I'll second it.
Go ahead, you second.
I'll second it.
Go ahead, you go.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion case. Then I need a motion on approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Assistant input, I think everyone that is here is on, here for agenda items. Correct? We'll go into new business.
Unless you decide to...
Do you want to switch them around?
Does that need a motion, or...
You can make a motion and second it and just have a general agreement. Don't have to have a vote on it.
I make a motion to switch items one and two on order.
I get a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. We'll go in number two first, a request for special use permit to operate a welding, fabricating, and machine shop at 353 St. Jimmy Drive, and I1 light industrial use in the C1 General Commercial District.
I have a question. In the staff report, page three of 11, project description, the applicant wishes to sell the building to someone who wishes to open a business for the welding, fabricating, and machining of various metal products. So, the reason that the special use permit is being applied for is so you can sell the building to the building?
No, that was, that was from Jeff and Sheila Walt. I'm sorry.
Here.
I'm sorry. Never been to a meeting before. Mine are usually a job trailer.
Yeah, I'm Mr. Harnish, I'm going to want to try and purchase the building from Jeff and Sheila.
Well, with the staff report, who's listed as seeking the application? Jeff and Sheila Walt. If you go to page 11 of 11, Article G, "The special use permit allowed under this section shall be issued to the specific use and owner identified in the application of the special use permit and shall not be transferable." So where does that leave us?
I would think that the permit would need to be in his name as the business owner, or prospective business owner.
Right.
And that's really the only problem I had with the whole thing was...
Yeah, me too, that's true.
I don't want you to have to go through this a second time.
Thank you.
I mean, I kind of had the same problem last month with the auto body place, but he was still the owner of the building, so it was, I figured that out on my own. Now, does him being on the special use permit on...
Three of seven.
Yeah, three of seven, does that, or three of not, oh yeah, three of seven, does that make it okay, or... Because he's listed on the application.
Mr. Harnish, is the permit contingent, or the purchase of the property contingent upon the SGB?
I'm too deep into buying it now to turn around, so...
So you intend to purchase it?
Yes, I intend to purchase it regardless, yeah.
And is that sale pending?
Yeah, basically, as soon as I close on the place I'm selling in Iowa.
Is there a way we could, I guess, approve this and then make a motion to approve it ahead of time, or under his name, so that he doesn't have to go through all this again?
You can make the recommendation that the special use permit be put in his name pending the sale of the property. It still has to go to the board of Alderman.
Right. But we're talking another month's delay if we, if he has to appear before us again to...
So, I mean, it would go in his name instead of Jeff's name?
Right.
Correct.
I mean, I guess we should see if there's any other questions or any public input before we make any motion, but I mean, I just want to make it easier, or not easier, but the right way to do it right the first time and then have to come back and put it in your name.
Any of the neighbors have any issues?
We did receive a call from the residential property owner next to them, and they did have some questions and concerns. I don't know if they are here tonight, or if they have submitted any remarks. We did tell them that if they could not attend tonight, that the board would be, have, holding a public hearing on it as well, so they may be coming for that.
Is there anyone in the audience that's here to address this issue? Okay. Ken?
Are you currently living in Iowa?
No.
You didn't make the application?
Well, no, we just, we just purchased, we are renting slash purchasing the property. We bought a house outside of town, and a building in town, basically. I'm always going to work on the road, so, the place, oh, excuse me, the place in Iowa hasn't sold yet, but we're moved here.
Okay. I'm still not clear why you haven't made the application.
Well, that was just basically, Sheila gave me the stone, Sheila Walt gave me that, I filled it out, you know.
But you filled it out in their names, is that what you're saying?
No, I filled it out, you know, with the intention of my name being on it, but they're still, they still hold the deed, so...
Joe, did you have a question?
I did, it's on, I mean, it's different than all of that, but the only other issue I had was page five of 11, number nine. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not real crazy about that, with the required buffer. That building's been there longer than most, or longer than the apartments that are next to him. A couple houses in the back were built after the fact, one of them's in the old driveway for that building. Why is it always the business owner's responsibility to put up privacy fences and incur more expense to get his business going, when that building was there for that type of, or not necessarily building, but as a business? I mean, the, the responsibility, I think, should be on the homeowner that built and encroached upon that existing building to put up a privacy fence if they need to, I mean, why, is that just...
The buffer area is only required between industrial and residential, and that was not a residential, industrial use prior.
So just that being commercial wouldn't require...
No.
It's switching it from, okay.
And they are requesting an industrial use.
All right, that makes sense, huh? You're aware of that, right?
No, so basically I have to fence the properties, what you're saying?
Private secrets, plus vegetation, between the residential area and the property owner.
Couple of the houses have privacy fences already, do they meet the requirement, or minimum, or would he just have to put up another fence next to them, or?
No, I was out there looking at that, that stopped the eight-foot fence that's required, it's more of a decorative fence. I don't know if that, I would assume that the reason the zoning code requests an eight-foot is for security reasons, as well as a sound barrier. I'm not sure if the fence out there would provide security.
How much time would he have to get this done?
That's up to, I assume that's up to the board to determine...
I mean, is there a way to...
Before the special use permit is...
I mean, opening a new business is risky, I mean, no matter what type of business it is, and, I mean, to go through all that expense before he knows even if the building, or if the business is going to take off, I mean, I hope it does, but...
I would assume that it would probably be connected to the occupancy permit.
Have you had a chance to see what we're looking at, sir?
No.
Would you like to borrow this one a little?
I didn't bring my glasses, ma'am, I couldn't read it if I wanted to.
Boy, you can't borrow my glasses.
How did that, was that just one of the...
Five of 11, just...
How did we make the motion to approve? It's not for them.
That's a lot, dude.
But, motion to approve with amended application stating your name on the application.
Well, you're on the front, it's Tom, no, it says that's the applicant.
Right. Twelve of all of the votes, please.
So, the application is correct, but the ownership information is wrong, so they would just have to resubmit ownership.
The ownership hasn't changed.
Hands yet.
The legal hands yet.
So, Mr. Walt, if he is, if this is granted as written to Mr. and Mrs. Walt?
They could open it, but he doesn't necessarily have permission to open it.
They can't transfer the special use permit to...
That's correct.
To...
Mr. Harnish?
Mr. Harnish, pardon me. So, this is inaccurate to the point where we can't act on it. I have absolutely no problem making a motion to approve an application for what you want to do.
Right.
But, the paperwork's wrong.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, I don't know how we can approve this when the paperwork's wrong.
I agree with, I have no problem with what you want to do either, but the paperwork's wrong.
If the Waltz would have happened to be here, would they be able to put his name as an applicant during the meeting, or is that something that would have to be done outside of the meeting?
It doesn't fall within the notice, period two.
Yeah, that'd make the notice incorrect as well.
No, because the ownership is not required for notice.
Whose name is in the notice?
I don't put names in the notice, not always.
So, notice is not...
The notice is...
His name is on here.
Yeah.
It's on the application, just at the very back.
Three of seven.
Three of seven.
Can we get Martin's opinion on that? What, Martin's opinion is?
Three of seven.
Yeah, it was...
One of seven.
There's the adjoining property owners who are attached, and then, when you continue the application, there it is at the top.
So, at the very back, City St. Jim Missouri, the application is in his name. No, but...
Well, he's listed as an adjoining property owner.
Yeah, in section C.
I don't know about this specific situation, I have a recommendation. It seems that the problem is that the applicant is Walt, and the special use is going to be exercised by...
Mr. Harnish.
Why don't you amend the language prohibiting the assignment of the special use, and add that it may be assigned only to him? The application...
So the special use can override letter G?
You can, you can condition the special use, that's your authority. So, rather than, than having the condition be it not be assignable, amend that, or make it assignable only to him. So, and then there's applications in the right order, you just amended the condition.
And then when it comes up, I mean, what is it, for a year, two years?
Brenda, yes.
So, can we make it for maybe six months, and then we apply with the crap after the sale goes through and all that stuff?
You wouldn't have to, you have to give them their...
So, it'd be a done deal?
Yeah.
I make that motion.
Joe, state your motion.
What Martin said. I make a motion to amend...
To approve.
Well, we have to amend first.
Her, her staff report is just a recommendation, you can do whatever you choose.
So we don't need a motion to amend, we can just approve?
No, you just approve with the condition.
Well, this is actually a condition set forth in the zoning code.
Yeah.
That we're amending.
Okay, I made a motion.
But only in this instance.
Right. That's what my motion is.
And then she can read it back to you.
Yeah.
I knew that was coming.
Yeah. She can read it back before we go.
Mr. Harnish, do you think that your purchase will be completed within...
About three to six months. Hopefully three weeks, but...
Reality?
Yeah, yeah.
Joe, would this be appropriate, motion to amend section 405-200-G to allow this special use permit to be transferable to Peter Harnish?
And approve the special use permit for the operation of welding?
Mr. Chairman, do you have a, do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Real call, please.
Yes.
Kathy Walts?
Yes.
Tony Grass?
Yes.
Jeff Ideman?
Yes.
Tom Couch?
Yes.
Buckjokers?
Yes.
Gary Roth?
Yes.
At seven, yes, is he running?
Motion carries. Where will that go to, the board of Alderman? Let's see. Not on that calendar.
Before the second meeting in March, which is March 13th.
I mean, first meeting in March, March 13th.
All right.
And you will be not part of that.
Okay. I'll do my best to be here, I work out of state all the time. If there would be any reason I can't be here, whether, whether I'm around or not, if I have my wife standing in my stead. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
No, that's okay, you keep it.
Shall I keep that one?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Get him back up to request for a special use permit to operate an auto body repair shop and conduct automotive sales at 202 North Main, to operate an auto body repair shop at 235 North Main, and to maintain an automobile wrecking site at 331 North Main Street. 202 and 235 North Main Street are located in the C2 Central Business District, and 331 North Main Street, Main Street is located in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District. Where do we start?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions, I'm prepared to make a motion when all questions are fully resolved.
Okay.
Sergeant Weiner, 235 Main, any questions?
I guess my concern is, is back in 2007, Mr. Weiner appeared before the board, and there was such a train wreck of things that happened prior to that, this board couldn't come to an agreement on anything, and we had set up a special committee of myself, Scott Pearson, and Teddy Ross, and one other person, which I don't remember who it was, and we met with Mr. Weiner out at the community center, in our meeting room, and we hammered out a plan, and brought it back before the board, it was approved, we agreed to basically wipe the slate clean, start over, and get everything in line. That was in 2007. Here we are roughly seven years later, six and a half years later, and we're right back in the same boat. Now, I personally, as far as the planning of zoning board is concerned, I know the city itself has other issues with it all, but we agreed back in 2007 to wipe the slate clean, so personally, I'm not looking at anything prior to 2007 as per the agreement back in July of 2007. He went seven years, let's drop it down to five years, was six months inspections, so that's 10 inspections that he obviously passed, he was granted a business license each year, and he met everything on this list, and they kept coming back, time and time again, that fence isn't long enough, well, that's what we told him to put up, or you need to put a bigger fence up, a longer fence up, do this, do that, knock this building down, or this part of the shed down, and all that. And he's complied with everything, and it keeps getting deeper and deeper, and, yeah, he's not in compliance now, he gave up, rightfully so, because nothing he was doing was pleasing anybody, and he gave up, and now he's not in compliance. So I'm just making that statement there, and then the other statement I have in this application that I just don't agree with and don't like the fact that it's in there is the fact that it says he's got a blatant disregard for the city and its happenings. You know, he serves, he volunteers on the Landmarks Commission, he's, he's tried to comply, and I just don't agree with that language that's in there, that he is going against, and trying, trying to be a nuisance, and I just don't think that that's a fair assessment that's in there. He's demonstrated good faith, at least for five out of the seven years, of trying to comply with everything it is, but if we keep going back to him and telling him that he needs to do more and more, and he threw his arms up, and I'm not sure where we can go from here with it all. But those are just comments that I have regarding it. I really don't know which direction to head with it anymore.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Take the podium, ma'am, and state your name and address.
My name is Dolores Boyd, I live at 222 North Main Street. So, if I may, I wrote something. We have been George's neighbors for about seven... We have been George's neighbors for about seven years, living next door to his garage on Main Street. George has proven to be extremely considerate, keeping his business neat, contained, and noise-free. He's been in business quite a long time now, and the Boyd family would be pleased to see him continue. George has been a great neighbor and an excellent friend, and I agree, he's done so much that was asked of him. And for us, we're sort of surrounded with George's business, and it's never been a problem for us.
Janice Warden, one ninety-eight North Main. I, as well, have been neighbors with George for almost six years, and, again, wonderful neighbor. I feel like if I had any sort of concern with the type of business that he conducted at any of his properties, I wouldn't have moved in as a close neighbor. He has been always neighborly, always considerate of my business, and I have never stepped on the toes of his. I see very often people using his one property right beside mine. I don't know that quite, that address. They use it as a backdrop for pictures on, you know, daily, weekly, monthly basis. Even the old gas pump, which is out front, people love that. I know that has nothing to do with him conducting business there, but I feel like that, as his neighbor, I would continue, would like to see him continue doing business. He's a great neighbor.
I'm Shannon McBride. I'm the manager of the Main Street Inn at two twenty-one North Main Street, and I moved in on July first of last year. George is an amazing neighbor. His business has never interrupted mine. We share, the side of my building is the backside of his garage area on the opposite side of the street. So I, most of my guests on that side of the building look out on his property, and no one has ever said anything negative about his space. It is always tidy. All of his equipment is in the back area, away from anything that anyone can see. I have never had a problem with smells, gasoline, oil, nothing like that has ever happened. And he's an amazing neighbor, not just to me, but to all of my guests who stay at the inn. He's very kind and nice to them, and his business has never interrupted mine, and noise, or anything, and I have guests that stay there regularly. And I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to recognize that Mr. Weiner has gotten a variety of permits and licenses to conduct his business the way he wants to, that he may not have had in the past. And I take that as a sign that he's, he's, doing compliance is important, and I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Sorry, who sits second?
What are we approving? Are we approving the whole thing, or in the application it says?
I mean, it's three different.
Right.
Oh, it's all this one, ain't it?
Well, I mean, the staff recommendation says?
Yeah, for, for, the motion to approve as addressed in the staff report for all addresses noted.
Well, the staff recommendation is to deny two and approve, partial approval of one.
I just moved to approve all. That's the motion that I made.
All right.
Moving, it's come up for the meeting.
It has to go to the Board of Alderman first.
I mean, if it's passed. If it's passed, one year, two years?
Um, two years. Unless they wish otherwise.
Unless the Alderman decides.
Right, right. They have done one year, two years, six months.
I got a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Bud Jokers?
Yes.
Tom Couch?
Yes.
Jeff Idman?
Yes.
Tony Grass?
Yes.
Kathy Walts?
Yes.
Joe Prince?
Yes.
Gary Roth?
Yes.
That was seven, yes, zero and?
March the fifteenth, on those two?
Yes.
March the fifteenth for your Board of Alderman meeting.
Our fifteenth.
Thirteen, I'm sorry. I wrote fifteenth down here.
Brenda, should you want to recycle this one and the last one too?
I'm sorry? Recycle it? Well, made you put it in the recycling bin, is that it? I can do that.
Any old business? Do we have any other business? I got a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Motion carries.